Good evening, everybody, and thanks for coming out on this rainy night. It could be snowy. So this is the, this is the planning board's January 9, 2024 regular monthly meeting. And I'd like to start, as we always do, with roll call to establish a quorum. So I'm going to start with Mr. Mr. Gurlock.
Present.
Mr. Schreiber.
Here.
Ms. Gomes.
Here.
Mr. Taylor.
Here.
Ms. Eva.
Present.
Mr. Hardy is present. Peter Brumante is not able to be with us tonight. He has a family emergency. Ms. Hilton.
Present.
Ms. Loebz.
Here.
So we have our quorum. And in addition, we have our legal counsel, Mr. Tad Romano, who is sitting just to my left. And to his left is Ashley Sweet, our interim town planner and administrative officer to the planning board. And Nathan Michael is with us tonight, our, the town consulting engineer. I don't see Rick Rogers tonight, but there's nothing much on the agenda that would require his presence. So I think we are ready for agenda item number one, which is, which is Robert Hartnett, 42 Lawton Avenue, Tiverton, Rhode Island, owner and applicant. And this is a concept plan review for a minor subdivision with a concurrent administrative subdivision. An administrative subdivision is when you move a lot line without creating a new lot or you merge lots into a single lot. And this, this, this development would require an administrative subdivision. It is about five acres in size, and it's up behind the Secanet Veterinary Hospital. It's very near the intersection of Main Road and Evans Avenue, but it's on the, on the eastern side of Main Road going up that hill. And so the back of it, actually, abuts Peachtree Hill Estates. So it's in that neighborhood, if you're, if you were wondering, because, because the address is a little confusing, Service Road T3. So we have Bill Smith, the civil engineer, and I also see Bob Hartnett with us. And are you Mr. Coelho?
Yes.
And Mr. Coelho, who owns the abutting property. So Bill, Ashley, would you like to say something in advance, or would you like Bill to do his presentation?
Why don't we let Bill do the presentation?
Good.
And then we can discuss.
Go ahead, Bill.
And we may have confused you a little bit by including an administrative subdivision plan, but we wanted to be, you know, we wanted to show you the whole picture. So I'll jump to this first. This is not for your review for this evening. This is the Coelho parcel.
Mm-hmm.
And then this is the, this is the Hartnett parcel. So what we'd like to do is annex some of the land in the back of the Coelho parcel from, from the Hartnett parcel to at Coelho, and we were going to cut out a small triangle over here. What we were trying to do ultimately, Mr. Hartnett is constructing his house on, on his lot now, and he would like to create two additional lots, one for his son and one for, for sale, to help fund the construction of the house and whatnot. The, in order to do that, we've got enough frontage to do that, but we were wrestling with the lot width requirement, which we need 120 feet of frontage, we need 150 feet of lot width measured at the building set, the minimum front yard building setback line. So we, we had initially, you know, 150 here, 150 lot width here, 150 here, and then we, we actually, the road has an angle point in it, so it's not a straight road. The definition of lot width talks about perpendicular straight line. This, any lots that are on a cul-de-sac, any lots that are on a curb, don't really fit that definition. This is, this is kind of the way I've been doing it for 30 some odd years. I had discussions with John and with Ashley, and we had a little, a little bit of a disagreement in terms of how that lot width is measured. I've been told that we need to extend the frontage even further across the Coelho parcel to make, to take advantage of the lot width. I, I'm not sure if, again, that's, that's not how I've been interpreting it for, for many years. So I, I'd like the board's opinion on that. I know ultimately it's John that's going to have to make the decision, but I'd like some, you know, just some feedback to see if I'm off base or not there. But what we'd like to do is create three lots on the Hartnett parcel after the adjustment with, with Mr. Coelho. We prefer not to do the adjustment with Coelho until we've defined, you know, exactly how the shapes of the Hartnett, the three Hartnett parcels are going to fall, so that we do it once and, you know, we don't have to go back and adjust things later on. So that's why we're before the board with a concept plan. We've done soil testing on, on the property. We've got suitable soil results to, to support three septic systems for, for the development. We're, I guess you're in the process of installing the electric. We had to extend the electric up the, the service road in order to, to feed the existing houses under construction, so we've taken into account the, the additional lots there. And the, the town water is not available in the street, so we were going to do onsite wells as well. We're going to use a common driveway so that we only have one physical alteration permit with DOT, and then we would branch off to the other lots from there. Stormwater, we would propose a stormwater basin up, up in the front on the downhill side where the houses are going to go, so we can capture the stormwater overland. We won't have to pipe anything, and then we can treat it before it's infiltrated and any excess gets, just goes, overflows the basin. So in a nutshell, that's what we've got. The Coelho property right now is approximately 37,000 square feet. The Hartnett parcel is about five, five acres, so we have, we have the room to, to make the, the adjustments that we want to with the boundary lines between the Hartnett and Coelho properties. We're looking for some, some comments from the board, so we can know how to go to the next phase, which would be finalizing the administrative subdivision.
So the, so administrative subdivisions are typically left to the administrative officer of the planning board. And I think we probably go with Ashley's recommendation, but we can discuss that if you'd like, Bill. I just have one, one basic question, which is, who, who owns Service Road T3? Is that a state road?
Rhode Island DOT owns that. They've issued physical alteration permits for the Coelho property and for the Hartnett property that's under construction.
And they maintain it as far as plowing? We don't probably have any plowing going on there now.
They, they plow that this, this past?
They have, they have, but they haven't had.
They have in the past, okay. So, I mean, that's, that's their road.
That was a concern of mine was, was the service roads, because we had a service road years ago when we were doing the industrial park, the service road that runs parallel to 24, and we had to get state approvals. So I didn't know if you had to have this, and I don't see Dick Rogers, Rick Rogers here tonight to ask, you know, any history of it, but it was a concern of mine. And you said there's no water available there, but you had to bring in electric?
Yes.
Poles?
The electric was.
Or underground?
The electric was back down here, so we had to bring it, bring it in.
Poles?
And you?
They put the two poles, one at the southern, southeastern, or southwestern corner of my, my land, and from there we go to underground.
Okay. I took a quick ride up, for us townies, it was Blueberry Hill years ago, and so I did a.
It still is.
What's going to be the address?
Well, I've been working, if you may, I've been working with Edward about this whole thing for over a year now, and I think he's getting just frustrated about the whole thing. Going to be an easy process. I think he's trying to get the state, get the town to take it over.
He needs to come to a mic.
Yes, no, we're very ill. You need everyone to speak.
Okay.
Yes.
As townies.
Bill, there, there have been times when people have dumped on that state road, particularly, as Bob knows, particularly at the, at the circle. That needs to stop. Now, it, of course, nothing was built at that time and with houses. And by the way, anybody can now see the new construction from Main Road with, now that the leaves are off the trees. And it's a, it's a very attractive house that's going up right now. But you'll, you'll, somebody will need to make sure that the state does a better job of keeping an eye on that.
Sure. Well, Bob will be living there, Charlie will be living there, so I'm sure that, you know, right now, there's nobody up there. It's a perfect place for kids to do what kids do, you know, but not, once there's some residences up there, I think that's going to be policed much better than it has been.
Right, right. Okay, thank you. Now, does anybody else have questions for, for either, either Bill Smith or, or Mr. Hartnett? So Janice?
I drove up there a couple weeks out of curiosity when I saw the, the house in Thor. Taking away Blueberry Hill. But the home is beautiful.
Thank you. The views are spectacular.
They are.
Only in the winter, though. Ashley, you had a comment?
So John and I have talked about this.
John, you know, kind of explained his rationale to me for his position, which is that the way that they've designed that hook doesn't meet the, the requirement. And I think, you know, John and I are willing to have additional conversations about that. Maybe we have a meeting and sit down together to discuss that. But right now, you know, John has basically said that that doesn't meet the lot width measurement. John ultimately makes that decision. The board can't override him. I can't override him. There's a process, you know, to follow if John makes that ruling and they, they disagree. So.
Do you understand what he's asking for? Because I, I was very confused when I talked with him.
Yeah, so.
Let me try this for you.
Did you draw something? Are you going to put it off the, all right. So what, basically what he's saying is that because this is the frontage line here, and then this is the continued frontage line here, this orange line is the side setback for this lot. It's not the front set, it's not the front line, because this is your frontage here.
Right, the orange line is not, right.
And this continues, so you can't measure this.
You measure to the sideline, so your, your lot width is measured from sideline to sideline.
I, I, I need to talk to John as well about this, Bill.
I think we need to have further conversation about it.
Next time you're in town, we.
Bill, I'll tell you this. My concern is, it's this small red area here between the purple and the orange.
Right.
That would extend the lot width line for you, and I don't think that's going to be 35 feet or so.
No, it's not.
Yeah, but.
But if, but if you measure the, the front yard setback off of the street, because the street has that angle point, it, it puts you on that diagonal that we show.
But the definition is horizontal distance between the sideline lines, measured at right angles, straight line parallel. The frontage line and the width line need to be parallel, so that's why you have the blue and the red parallel.
So what happens on a curb, though?
I don't know. I don't care. I don't need to know right now. There's a trapezoid.
Okay. I mean, I, I've been wrestling with this for a while, and I put together a bunch of different.
So I think to the, to Todd's point, even if you were able to measure this, you can't measure this.
Right.
The way you're measuring it. This line right here that you've put in as a measurement to get to the 150.
Because the frontage doesn't go past that angle point?
Correct.
So if I move that point two feet past the angle point, then I can grab that?
That's why we suggested that if you did this.
Okay. We're trying to, the, the septic system for Charlie's lot is, is in that area, so the more we take away in that front yard, the, the more complicated it will be.
The, the other option that you have is to ask for a variance for the lot width measurement. And if you do a variance, this application would come to this board, and they would be authorized to grant that variance as part of Unified Development Review.
Okay. I, I guess the preference is to not ask for a variance for something that's appealable, that, that could, you know, get part of the way through and then find out that it, there's an appeal from, from someone.
And Bill, I also sent Court an email yesterday suggesting he look at the rural frontage subdivision, right? Because then you only need 120 frontage, 120 width for a rural frontage, right? And then you wouldn't need any variance, and you wouldn't need that jog at the T3 Service Road.
We, we had looked at that before, and there was some issues about the maximum building coverage on, that's associated with rural, that's not associated with a conventional. That's why we, we were hoping to do a conventional.
Okay.
But if, if we can meet with John next time you're in town, that would be great. We can kind of all get on the same page.
Yeah, I mean, I think we need to sit down together and discuss this around the table and just, you know, come to some agreement, because it's difficult with John talking to me, and then John talking to you, and then I've talked to you, and we're all kind of talking.
Right, right.
But not at the same time. So I think that that would be helpful, but I do think that there are potential options for you.
Okay.
For the application. It just, I'm, I'm not sure that this one works, but let's just, like, you know, we're not shutting the door on it. Let's continue to discuss it and see if we can come to a resolution.
All right. Just trying to get to the finish line so that we can adjust the lot line, and Charlie can, can start construction on his house, so that's.
Understood, and, you know, I'll, I'll make sure that I make myself available to have a meeting to do that. And, you know, as I said, if, if, if you were to ask for a variance, this would come back to this board. If you don't ask for a variance, if we come to some resolution and you're able, we're able to do this without a variance, then this gets reviewed administratively. This board doesn't see this application.
All right. Still trying to figure out the new law system.
You and everyone else. But that, that's the, that would be, so it would be one of those two situations for you, for the applicants.
Okay. Does the board have any other feelings about what we're trying to do and, you know, that could hurt us down the road as we get to the preliminary plan and final plan?
Just a point of clarification. We're talking about four new houses, aren't we?
One's under construction.
Three more.
And there'd be, then there'd be Charlie's, and then there'd be two more for Bob.
So we're talking about a total of four. One is under construction, three to be built. One, one will be Mr. Coelho's, and two, and, and there will be two other homes in addition to the one that's now being constructed. So altogether, we're looking at four new homes.
But two different owners, two different projects.
I, I, I understand that, but, but, but I, I just wanted to, the big picture is, we're going to get four new homes in that immediate neighborhood, right? Okay, I just wanted to be clear about that. Three for the subdivision that we're discussing, and then, of course, Mr. Coelho can build by right. So I, and we, we, we hope that they're all as attractive as the one that's going up now.
What's the total acreage on Hartnett piece?
So Mr. Court Chappell, the legal counsel for Mr. Hartnett, has just joined us, and Court, if you have any, if you'd like to say anything, come up to a mic, but I, I think Bill has covered it very well.
Yes, and I, just to explain the conceptual.
Speak into the mic, please.
To explain the conceptual aspect of it, it really comes back to things that were before the board before. So as you know, in the R40, we need 120 foot of frontage, but 150 foot of lot width. So we have 120 foot of frontage, so a minor three-lot subdivision, if it wasn't for the 150 width, would be a matter of right. We have 415 feet, and 150 times three is 450. So now I want to take you back to Fred Souza and some other cases.
Oh, please.
Just, I, it's important. We came to the board, and we said, in the area where a lot is 120 on the street, but gets to be 150 further back, we have 150 foot of lot width. If you look at the lot we're talking about, the lot furthest to the left on the screen there, it's plenty wide enough. In fact, it's the widest of the three lots, but it's not 150 feet at the street if we start going in that direction. So on Fred Souza, I stood up here and I said, for years, we have looked at it and said, if the lot frontage is adequate, and the lot width where we put the house is 150, we move the setback line to the front house to the wider spot. If you remember what happened in Fred Souza's, it was 164 feet on the street. That was an R80, 150, you had frontage, but you needed 200 foot of width. 300 feet into the lot, it got to its 200 feet, which was the front lawn for the house. And the board gave me a 10-foot variance because it was 190, and I needed 200. You said, we will recommend to the zoning board that you grant it, and you did, and I went to the zoning board, advertised the 10-foot variance 300 feet off the road where the house was going to go, and they granted it. New sheriffs came to town, and I'm not saying they're wrong, but Todd and Ashley looked at it, and she said, I don't understand why you have a 10-foot variance 200 feet back. You should have a 34-foot variance at the street. It's 166, 34 is 200. I have no problem with your plan, but you need a 34-foot variance, not a 10-foot variance. I say, guys, we've been doing this for 30 years in this town. This is the way the zoning board looks at it, and you've all seen hockey stick lots. If the hockey stick lot, if it's only 50 feet and it goes back to 200, they say, you can have less frontage, but I want that setback to be where that lot is wide and where there's a setback. So a delay happened to Souza, and I get it. We went back to the zoning board, and I said to the zoning board, I'm here for clarification or a variance. Well, what do you mean, Court? Well, you gave me a 10-foot variance. Yup, that's what you need. Not according to Ashley and Todd. They say technically, and I don't disagree, Todd and I don't disagree, that the ordinance says lot width is measured at the minimum setback of the lot. And if the minimum front yard setback is 50 feet, then at that 50-foot line, you either have 150 in an R40 or 200 in an R80. And the zoning board said, yeah, yeah, yeah. That's a quote. That's not how we do it. You don't need a variance. Clarification, that's how we interpret it. Now, I should be able to rely on that. You should be able to rely on that. We should just say that's the new rule in town or change the ordinance. But it's come up twice since, and we've said, okay, in this case, before we give Mr. Coelho land, before we potentially make our lot smaller, which could have effect on your decisions of whether we can cut this into three lots, are you measuring it the way that the zoning board said? Because then I don't need any variances at all. I have 150 feet width on Lot 1, I have 150 feet at Lot 2 at the, at the setback, and the third lot I have more than 150, as long as I move my setback back. If so, I have a minor subdivision, no notice to neighbors, do not pass go, and all due respect, you have to grant it. If I need a variance, up until January 1, you said, go to the zoning board. I could be a little cocky when you said, go to the zoning board, because I said, oh, I've been there, done that, and they're going to say, Court, you don't need a variance. After January 1, you have the variance. Do I get a variance from you? Is it a variance from you? That's a difference. Variances can be granted, they don't have to be granted. You are a very reasonable board and are good to me, and I'm not saying you wouldn't do the variance. But grounds for a variance can be appealed by neighbors. And if they appeal it, if I ask for a variance and they appeal it, and I'm tied up for two years, I really didn't do my job as an attorney. I don't think we need a variance under the zoning board's interpretation, which would have been the case until January, when you kick it back.
Equally, equally, in a butter who objects to this project could appeal the town's decision granting you this, saying you don't need a variance, because the plain language clearly states at the minimum front setback line. So then you will also be tied up in court for two years with this board not applying the plain language of the ordinance.
Not applying the plain language of the ordinance. When it came up before, they sent to the planning board or zoning board for an opinion.
I understand that, Court.
And got the opinion that wasn't appealed. One of those is a theoretical appeal, and the other one is a straight-up appeal. And I'm worried about the straight-up appeal.
If, if a butter's going to appeal because a, a variance is granted, then they would also appeal because the variance is not granted.
Maybe. Well, people come to our offices and ask to, to, to appeal. When they do, I say, I appeal if there's merit to your appeal, and I don't appeal when there's no merit. I would not, I would call it no merit, with the town's interpretation historically has been this, as tested by this other case, as sent to the zoning board, as done.
And there's no precedence in zoning, in the town boards, and when you have plain language?
Then, then why, if you don't care, why wouldn't I get to pick which appeal battle I have? A good one or a crappy?
I care, because we're going to apply the plain language as we need to.
But you were told by your zoning board that you were wrong, so you apparently just are blowing them off.
No, we're not at all.
But you sent me there to get that opinion, and that opinion is useless, is what you're telling me. So I tried to outsmart you by saying, you know what? I won't make it that. I'll put this dumb little hiccup into Charlie Coelho's land. And by extending that dumb little hiccup, I'll be darned if I don't have 150 and 150 and 150. Now, do I want that hiccup? Nope. Does Mr. Coelho want that hiccup? No. But if I do that as an administrative subdivision, which I can do, unless you deny it because it's an irregular-shaped lot, I now have 150 feet of frontage. If that's the way you want to see it, I'm okay with that, but I don't need a variance.
Well, and what you missed is, we don't know if you have the 150 foot.
I was going to say, do you want to put the color one back up?
Well, because of the way you, that's, again, we went to someone to ask for an interpretation. They gave us an interpretation. When we drew it, the interpretation changed. And, and again, it's, I'm not criticizing, it's complicated stuff, maybe. Maybe you have that or not. I think you either are going to, if you're going to literally read it, that you measured it at the 150, then you're going to have to go across the front, because if that, if a lot turns, we count that frontage. If you count that frontage, X plus X is that much frontage.
The lot doesn't turn.
But the lot doesn't turn. This, this orange line is not a front line. This is the front line.
Right.
This is a side setback. The only piece you get to measure by doing this is that little red sliver. You can't measure from here to here. You're not parallel to the frontage.
I understand that interpretation, but it is not what was, again.
Well, I don't think the zoning board weighed in on how you calcu, how, how frontage works.
The zoning board thinks I don't need to do any of that, but you hadn't weighed in.
They only weighed in, they only weighed in on where you measure. They didn't weigh, they didn't weigh in on the fact that when you hook a right around the corner, that you're not frontage or you are frontage. The zoning board hasn't weighed in on any of that. They've only weighed in on the measurement of the setback, where, where lot width gets measured.
Measured parallel to the road.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, there's two pieces that are parallel to two different roads.
But the frontage on.
And you would count it as frontage, but you won't count it as, as.
It's parallel, it's not parallel to the road, it's parallel to the front lot line. And you're taking a, a right angle there on that orange line is not a front, that's a side setback. That's the side of this lot, right here. Because this is the frontage.
Can I, can I, can I tell you something? Assuming that, assuming that we had 150 foot of frontage, let's use this one, 120 foot of frontage, and 50 feet back, you need 150 foot of frontage, correct?
Correct.
There is only two possibilities for that to happen. You take up the 30 feet in one angle on one side to a point, that triangle. You take it on one side, or you take it equally on both. But when you do, you still count wherever it comes to. So could we sharpen that angle so that it's 150? Is that going to make you happy?
It's not about making me happy.
Well, it, it's about, is that going to be?
This is John's interpretation. John spoke to me about it. We agreed on his interpretation.
Could that be wrong?
You know, John, John also looked at square, like, squaring off that, turning that into a triangle, basically, so that it doesn't go like this and come in, that you actually are still meeting the front line. If this, if, if this came this way. If this, if, if this came this way, then you can measure this piece of it, because it is parallel to the frontage. This is a sideline, the way it's been drawn.
And that angle...
That's John's interpretation.
Again, we've been trying to get him to ask us how we could draw it. You understand why I wanna do it without a variance?
Of course.
In all due respect, that's, variances, you can grant them, but you don't have to.
And before you came, we talked about the fact that we would be happy to sit down around a table, talk through the, you know, the issue, because it's been a lot of John and I talking, and then Bill and I talking, and then Bill and John talking, and then you two talking, and so I think we just need to have a conversation together.
But the reason we put it on with the administrative is so that you could all see it. So you didn't say when we got back, we're trying to pull anything, we're trying to do anything different, and if you want it done different, talk to me. That's why we wanted to put it on with everybody to look at it. The reason it doesn't just do it now, or file for our subdivision and ask for the variance, is because Mr. Coelho wants to draw a building permit. And he can't draw a building permit now unless we give him the land in the back to put the system and do that. And if we do that, then I can't give that land back in front as a matter of right unless he's a conforming lot. Because you can do an administrative subdivision, as long as you don't make a non-conforming lot more non-conforming. Can't cut a chunk out of something if it's not adequate frontage, adequate this and adequate that. So I need the decision beforehand. I'll be the wise guy, need the decision. If we can do it that way, we'll do it that way. He can build tomorrow for all I care, if we're gonna do it as administrative, if we can do that. If you say, I'm gonna look at Souza's interpretation or the zoning board's interpretation, I didn't need this at all. If you tell me, I'm gonna grant you a variance when you come here and get it for this third lot.
Even if we followed...
I'm okay with a wink and a nod, but I'm not okay doing it and, and risking this guy and finding out that I cost him a lot.
But even if we followed the zoning board's interpretation, that you can measure the width anywhere, I...
The fir- what you don't have, the first lot next to Mr. Coelho would be 150 feet wide.
I don't have measurements on these lot, on these lots, so...
No, I know that, but, but just, just call that first one square at 150, call the second one square at 150, and the third by definition is 115, because you're 415 total. Your 115, ironically, the one you can't build on, is the widest lot by twice. Right? The last lot, which is only has, which...
Can we go by A, B, and C, please? Because I'm not following, because you're looking at it differently than I am. So C is the lot...
If we made...
Where there's an existing dwelling.
If we made C 150, and B 150, then A is...
Back behind the house.
And back behind the house would be 200 feet wide. It's just not 150 feet wide at the 50-foot mark. So the widest lot is the one we can't build on. So it, it, I'm not saying you shouldn't grant a variance easy enough, but again, you got new rules in January. New rules in January say you can grant variances. What it does, but, on a regular minor subdivision, there's not even notification to neighbors. It's just a minor subdivision. Now it's a variance, so we have notification of everybody, everybody can come in, everybody can say, why are you giving a variance to that guy? All he just wants to do is make three lots instead of two.
Hold on.
I don't know if it's a grounds...
How much is the variance?
Modification, right.
Yeah, it's a modification.
I have no idea about that.
It's not a variance.
Still have to give notice, and Court doesn't really give notice.
You still have to give notice.
It's not, isn't it 25% we did the count?
It is 25%.
It's 25%. I, I think you might be right if I did it collectively and made all three lots A minor. If you put it all on one lot, you cross that number, I believe, if we...
What do you mean, if you put it all in one lot?
25% of 150 feet is 37.5 feet.
So you'd be, you'd be asking for a modification, not even a variance.
Twenty, 25%.
Of 150 is 37.5, I did the math. And that's enough.
So you'd be, you'd be asking for a modification, you wouldn't even be asking for a variance.
Okay. It's better. Less than an appeal standard.
You could request, I mean, we're...
It's better than, you have to do it.
Well, I mean, if some, if somebody objects, then it gets kicked up to a variance. But, we're, you know, we're still willing to sit down and talk through the logic of it and to come to a conclusion. Nobody's trying to stop anybody from doing anything.
I know, but our, our Supreme Court has said, if I ask, I can't later say I didn't have to ask. So your interpretation might be right, it might not be right, that's another day. If I ask for a special use permit or for a variance, I can't, when I lose, go back to Superior Court and say, I didn't need a variance. I have to live with what I asked for. So by asking for a modification, I'm consenting that if one guy stands up and complains, I need a variance. As opposed to, Mr. Hartnett, you have a matter of right, you know, nice house you built, we did this based on three, you can do this as...
It wouldn't preclude you from getting the administrative subdivision still.
Yeah.
No.
I mean, you could ask for the modification, and if you have an objection, you could not with, you don't push it forward to a variance, you withdraw the request, and then you sit back down and try to reconfigure that administrative subdivision.
But I have to draw, I have to draw, I gotta do the administrative subdivision first, because he needs it immediately. And I can't not give it and have an agreement going, hey, if I fail, deed this back to me, because I need a variance, deed it back to you, because it's got a substandard law.
Okay, but Mr. Coelho, in all due, in all due respect, his emergency or need to get something done today or yesterday is not this board's problem, right?
No, but consistency, you're the one changing the consistency.
No, not at all.
I don't think that's their statement.
I, I advise this board, and I advise the zoning board as well, that their interpretation of lot frontage has to be at the front setback.
In fairness, Todd, you told me that I could go back in Fred Souza's case and ask for an interpretation.
That's what this board decided.
Well, though, that's what this town decided, and when they gave me the interpretation that I was right, they recorded a plan based on that.
Yeah, on that single project.
Okay, so on, it's a little difficult for me to say that the interpretation the board got is going to be applied unilaterally to one project and no others, when it's the exact same fact of law. As wrong as they might have been, or as right as they might have been...
I'm going to continue to advise this board that lot frontage is measured at the front setback, as per the plain language of the ordinance.
I get it.
If the board disregards that, that advice, it's, it's the board's decision.
I, I always stand here and say, I don't ask the board to disregard everybody's advice. I don't think that's a good precedent for anybody. But that's different from, you know, I gave you that opinion last time, and you said, it's Harret's case, let's send it to the zoning board. Well, Harret spoke. Now it's a completely different decision. Let's disregard what Harret said. That's what we're doing. We are not saying, we're saying, I got an interpretation, and the hell of them, they were wrong. That's, you know it, and I know it. That's what we're doing.
Just, just a point here, I, like, 25 minutes ago, we had a path forward, with all due respect, sir, and now I've lost what we're debating here, because it seems to be a little ta- ah-tat, tip for tat. Um, can we get clear on what the path forward is? It sounded like we needed the four or five bodies, or...
Sit down and talk.
The stakeholders to get around a table, work through, it sounded like there were options that could avoid a variance, which saves a lot of headache. Like, what are we doing here? Sorry, long day.
Uh, no, Bill, you, 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 uh, you're, you're right on target, I think. I don't think we're gonna solve our, uh, resolve our, our differences tonight, but I think we can resolve our differences if the key people sit down in good faith with one another, because I think from the board perspective, um, w- we would, we do not want to unnecessarily delay anything. Um, and I think from our perspective, the subdivision that's being proposed by Mr. Hartnett, I think, is something that we can all live with, that is not, does not pose any difficulty. So, I, I think from our perspective, and I'm thinking just for the board, not for staff, um, we'd like to move forward on this, and, and we, um, we're, we have no real problem with what we see at this point, um, but, but, but it is necessary for, for, for the two lawyers and the other, and the other technical experts to get together and resolve this. We could go on all night, the way we have done in the last half hour, and, and I'm not gonna permit that as Chair.
I, I, fair.
We, we have other things on our agenda tonight.
What I talked to Todd...
We, we understand what you're saying. At least I do.
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna end with one more thing, it's not controversial. What I talked to Todd about is drawing what we had to draw, and assume that Ashley's right, that we can draw that to satisfy John there. What I said was, if you don't like the looks of that lot, when I come in for the three lot subdivision, if you give me a modification, I'll unring the bell and put it back. Okay? But then, even if somebody appealed it, I'm still a winner if they appeal, because I have it. So I was trying to do it as a concept to say, I'll fix what isn't. All right? That's all I'm gonna say. I would like to come back and say, if you give me a modification here, we'll square these up, because I like to square lots.
Okay. I'd like to call on my colleagues now to, to just get their sense of what they, how they react to what Mr. Hartnett is trying to do. Do I see any hands? Does anybody care to make a comment?
Tricia.
Oh, yes, uh, Tricia.
I don't have any issues whatsoever with the, with the proposed subdivision, and it, 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 I wish the applicants good luck. I hope that the, the two attorneys and staff can come to an agreement as quickly as possible. Personally, I'd be quite happy to see it, if in fact it comes back to us for virtually no discussion and a vote, where I would be voting yes, so, um, good luck in getting this resolved.
Do, do the rest of you pretty much feel the same way?
I have no qualm with the, the application. I just, we're not getting anywhere with this back and forth.
Exactly, we're not.
I agree with Bill. I have one more question, Bill, Bill Smith. Do you envision any problems as far as borings go, or blasting has to be done up here?
So there is some ledge in the front, in the back, where the septic systems were gone, went, went 10 feet, didn't hit any ledge, so we're, we're okay in that respect. There may be some blasting, um, or ledge removal for the foundations, depending on where the houses get sited.
Has Mr. Rogers seen the plan? Has he had any, anything to say about it?
I haven't talked with him about it. I, I'm assuming it was on the distribution, but I, I don't have that much sure.
Okay, I'm just concerned about the, the service roads and past history.
So Rick, Rick Rogers, our DPW director, is here. Rick, did you have any comments you'd like to make? Yes, Rick?
Happy to talk to Bill anytime, but Service Road, uh...
You have to come up and speak into the mic.
If I understand the situation correctly and the location correctly, Service Road, T3 or whatever, is a state road, not a DPW road, so we really don't have any purview over that road.
And they maintain it now, correct?
I, I don't, I'm not gonna say they maintain or not maintain, but it's a state road. And that's not, I'm not, I'm not trying to be sarcastic or anything, I really don't know what they do on that road, but it's not a state road. I mean, it's not a town road, it's a state road.
Right, right.
I do know they put some barricades up when there was some dumping up there for us.
Yes, yes.
To stop the dumping up there.
That's correct, this summer there were barricades up.
All the sofas and everything.
Thank you.
So, Bill, did you get all of the feedback from the board that you needed?
I believe so. I'm anxious to meet with Ashley and John and Todd, and kind of bring this thing to a head, but, you know, calculate what we need to do and make the adjustments so we can get going.
Right, because, because traditionally, the board does not get involved in administrative subdivisions. We, we leave that to the discretion of our administrative officer. And, and, and in this instance, we will be, we will be taking her advice, so we, but we're sure that, that everybody can work this out, that we can work this out to everybody's satisfaction. Excellent, thank you so much.
Mr. Chappelle, has that question been answered, as to whether this board would be amenable to granting the variance? Should it, should you pursue that avenue?
I think so.
I, I, I think...
And what I'm, what I'm hoping again is to draw it in a way that I don't need a variance, and then to tell you, I'm gonna unring that bell and put it straight again for you when I ask for the modification. That's what you, what I suggested might be the best.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we, we wish you the best.
Does the fiduciary have a claim? The fiduciary doesn't have any type of claim, right?
So the, the next item on our agenda is Sandy Woods Land Trust, and this is the artist community near the new Tiverton Library, near Bliss Four Corners. And we have, we have Michael Shelter, as we all remember from the project that Michael led us through on Fish Road. Michael is now proposing a solar ground array about the same size, approximately an acre in size. And this would be on land actually owned by the, the artist community, and Church Community Housing also has an interest in this. So Christian, and remember, Belton. Christian Belton is the head of Community Church Housing. Does anybody remember Steve Osterguy from years ago? I know Rosemary does. I, I guess, most of us are not old timers, but, but Christian is, is now in that same position. And this would be, this would be, this would be a ground array between Presidential Avenue and the Parallel Road, which is called Cornell Road, very, very close to where the old wind turbine was located, that Joe Bassem constructed, and very close to the barn, if anybody has gone up there. So, having, having said that, I'll, I'll turn it over to Michael. But I'd also like to note that, that this project will need a special use permit, and our special use permits are suspended temporarily while we, while we modify them in lieu of state legislation that came into effect at the beginning of this year. So, so Michael and Christian can't move ahead until the special use permits come back into effect. So having, having said that, Michael, would you like to go ahead and, and give us a little bit of a taste of what you're attempting to do?
Yeah, absolutely. So I'm actually going to hand it off to Christian to just do a quick status of what's going on at Sandy Woods and everything, and then we'll get into why a solar system at Sandy Woods, and go over, you know, our rough proposed site plan, and talk about how that relates to the existing solar ordinance.
Good, and, and Christian, speak into the mic.
Yes, thank you.
Because, because we have, we now have people sitting at home watching these proceedings on YouTube, and I have noticed that sometimes we go mute because people are not speaking into the mic. So, I will be getting after my colleagues in, in a minute about that.
Good evening, board members. I'm Christian Belton, the Executive Director of Church Community Housing Corporation. Thank you for giving us this opportunity tonight. We're really here just to try to test any appetite that the board might have for amending the comprehensive permit that was granted in 2009 to create the Sandy Woods Farm Arts and Agricultural Development. The reason that we're here inquiring about the board's appetite for this is that Sandy Woods hasn't achieved all of the goals that we had hoped for, and it's largely the result of financial hardships that were created as a result of the very poor performance and then absolute failure of the wind turbine that you referred to earlier. All 50 of the apartments that exist at Sandy Woods Farm have all electric heating, air conditioning, hot water, they, they are all electric, and the wind turbine was sized to produce 50% of the electricity that would be used by those 50 apartments. And I actually, it's hard to know where the fault lies, really, because we had been in negotiations with National Grid about the rate that we would be paid for the electricity that the wind turbine produced before purchasing the wind turbine, and then when it was delivered, they sort of backed off of that and proposed the wholesale rate, which was a fraction of the price... rate, which was a fraction of the price that the, they had indicated they would be paying. And so the wind turbine sat for a year in shipping containers in the field where it was ultimately erected. And as you probably know, moisture in electrical components are not a good thing. And so it sat there awaiting construction for a year before we finally were able to get the original agreement with National Grid solidified and built the wind turbine. But from that point forward, it broke constantly. It didn't go two months without breaking. And because it was a French-made wind turbine, we had to, even though it was under warranty, we had to, you know, diagnose it, get the manufacturer to agree that this was the problem, and have them ship it over on the slow boat from France before we could reinstall that component and get it working again before it would break and be out of operation for months. So it, the amount of electricity that it ever produced was a fraction of what we had estimated it would produce. And then, once it was out of warranty, it was just financially infeasible to keep repairing it at all and stopped operating it from that point forward. And so this has been a massive hardship for the development. Church Community Housing has developed over 1,000 units of housing during, during its existence. It continues to own 600 units of housing, of which the 50 that existed. Sandy Woods are a, an outlier. If you go to all of our properties, they are well-maintained and well-managed. And Sandy Woods, because of the failure of the wind turbine, has always struggled financially. And so what we're trying to do is to come up with other creative ways to improve the balance sheet of Sandy Woods Farm so that we have the funding available for the arts programming, for the agricultural programming, for the, so that there isn't more deferred maintenance, that we can continue to pay taxes and insurance and the mortgage and all of these things. And it, it has been, because if you think about what an electric bill for 50 all-electric apartments costs, half of that, year after year after year after year, quickly drained the replacement operating reserves that had originally been capitalized when we closed on the funding and started construction. And since then, Church Community Housing has actually been putting our own money into Sandy Woods Farm to the tune of $150,000 over the last three years, just to keep it from going bankrupt. And so, we're here hoping that you will, you know, hear us favorably and might consider an amendment to our comp permit to allow for this ground-mounted solar array. Because the, the revenue that it would generate would be a step towards putting Sandy Woods on a stronger financial footing.
Thank you. So, does anybody around the table have any questions or comments to make?
Yeah, I do.
So Dick?
Yeah, how are you gonna connect to the electrical grid?
Yeah, so there's, there's already a transformer there from the wind turbine that had been there. And the wind turbine was a 275 KW turbine. So the transformer is already larger, actually, than what is required for the 200 KW PV array that's proposed.
You're not gonna dig up ogre marsh again?
No, we certainly are not. Nobody wants to do that.
No, I couldn't see any connection coming from the array.
Yeah.
On these, on these plans.
Yeah, these are rough site plans. We wanted to get the board's feedback first, but we already have this out with Rhode Island Energy, and they're reviewing it for interconnection and everything. So, that's already been taken care of.
Where's the wind turbine? Is that what's disposed of? Is that still on site?
Yeah, we just, we just recently had it removed. A Canadian company got in contact with us, and they own wind farms in the Caribbean of this same make and model. And there are some equipment, there's some components that aren't available from the manufacturer anymore. And so, we arranged a contract with them to remove it in exchange for the salvage value, basically.
So, Bill?
Mr. Belton, how are you? So, I, I mean, just from my perspective, I support the proposal. I'd like that we're not clear-cutting any sort of forest to lay this down, so that's good. To pick up on the question that Dick had, if there are plans to also replace the turbine, will there need to be a larger transformer once both renewable energy sources are in play?
Yeah, I mean, the, how the, a, a replacement wind turbine would connect to the grid at that point would have to go through electrical engineering, and I'm not sure.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
That's fine.
What's the difference between agricultural array and a normal array, like the one you're doing up on Fish Road? It looks, I mean, other than incubating chicks, what do you do with the electricity? That makes it agri, that it ties it to agriculture.
The ordinance requires that an agricultural array be used to essentially power the agricultural operation. A regular array, like they did on Fish Road, doesn't have the same requirement, and that can be, that, that power can be sold back to the grid fully.
So what is the demand for the agricultural programming from an energy perspective? If, if this might, yeah, I'm, I'm sort of directing it that way. I didn't expect you to. So, the energy being produced aims to provide energy for the agricultural programming? Is, I mean, that can't...
So, so yeah, that's where we're also open to hearing from the board about how we should apply for this specific project. So, the grounds do have, under the comprehensive permit, there are things related to agriculture, but we would still intend for this one to be a back-to-the-grid project.
Yeah, because, I mean, the last time I drove through there, I really haven't seen much in the way of agriculture. And perhaps it is a chicken-and-egg sort of thing, but...
As, as Christian and I have discussed, that field where we're proposing the array right now, it's only suitable for hay.
Hay.
So there's nothing else that can go in there, which is why we feel it's an ideal spot to put a solar array that would be screened in by the natural vegetation that's...
But the ability to, sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but the ability to sell energy back to the grid intends to put the project back on financial footing, in which to hypothetically fund agricultural programming, or...
I mean, I'm not sure that we want to limit the, any potential amendment to the definition of an agricultural array. Yes, the community garden there and the orchard that exists, those things have not been supported to the degree that we would like for them to have been because of the financial hardship that the development has experienced. But I couldn't say that all of the revenue, that the lease for the land that the PV array would go on would be limited to agricultural programming.
Got it.
It's, it's, it's more of a wholesale support of the development to help it pay its bills, period.
Got it. Thank you.
So it does, with that, we may have to explore the option of submitting it as accessory, but then there is that zoning district restriction, which this property is zoned as residential. So that's, we're here to have, this is great feedback, because we're here to have a really good conversation about this.
So Tricia?
So, so I'm a fan of the small kind of projects that you do. And, you know, I'm also supportive of Sandy Woods. But I, I think, a couple of things. I think this is a pretty big hill here for you. The first thing, and I'm not gonna go into this, but I, I did a little bit of looking because I wanted to see the original plan. And then I went back and I took appraisal of the deeds. And I'm not a lawyer, and so, you know, this is, this is just what I saw. That, separate from what the planning board can or can't do in terms of amending the plan, it seems to me as though that there are deed restrictions and covenants that run with the land that weren't obviously granted by the planning board, that were part of the original, that were part of the original transfer of the property from Mr. Bassem. And one of the things that it seems to say is that that field, where that, where the now defunct wind turbine is, is covered by a number of covenants and deed restrictions with regard to what can be put on it. And that, my reading, and again, there's a lot of documents there, but that the only structures allowed on that particular field are, in fact, the wind turbine and any particular accessories that are structures that are required by the wind turbine and the utility easement. And that, other than that, that parcel is to be maintained as open space to be used for things like passive recreation or community gardening. So, that's not something that the board can get into, but I don't know whether or not you've actually researched what, according to the, according to the recorded land use deeds, you can actually do on that property. If you haven't, I suggest maybe that you consider that. I'm not sure you can...
Yeah, that, that's a good point. I mean, we just wanted to see, before, we're very familiar with pursuing a comprehensive permit approval. And you, our, our normal course of action is to hire an expert real estate attorney to come up with a list of all of the relief from both zoning and subdivision regulations that would be needed in order for us to get this comprehensive permit approved. We really wanted to come tonight to just see if, if we have a, you know, before we hire the attorney, to look at the, the deeds and the restrictions and that, if there is a potential application, how the board might respond to it before we invest that time and effort.
Fair enough. So then, that brings me to the, so the board can't obviously do anything about, you know, deed restrictions or covenants, right? That's not, we have no control of that. But as far as the solar ordinance goes, I don't, I don't see, even if we brought the special use permits back, to my looking at this, that you would qualify under the agricultural accessory. There are, there's five or six, there's six criteria there, and you don't need any of them. And the committee that put together this ordinance spent a great deal of time discussing whether or not ground-mounted solar arrays belonged in residential zones. And other than a call-out for, for very specific kinds of agricultural use and impaired properties, in other words, you know, contaminated sites that you can't do anything else with and you could possibly reclaim them, that, that the answer was no. And that was in, in part because there, there were members of the community who, having had a few of these installed, you know, said no. It was also because the guidance, the more current guidance from DEM, from GrowSmart, and even from the Office of Energy Resources, is that as much as possible, it's better to have roof-mounted solar than it is ground-mounted. And if you're gonna do ground-mounted, you know, doing it in industrial and commercial areas are better. And finally, because if the University of Rhode Island, in the, in the Department of Alternative Energy Economics, who knew they had one? And these people are obviously pro-alternative energy sources, but they studied the economics of it, actually did the, the definitive study on whether or not this, the installation of ground-mounted solar impairs property values in the surrounding area. And the answer was yes. And even they said, you need to really think about this because it is a detriment to properties both within a one-mile radius and even a five-mile radius. So, the determination was made that, that these aren't really appropriate as, you know, ground-mounted installations in residential property, in residential zones, which is what you're in. So, under that circumstance, I think, and Ashley can correct me if I'm wrong, your only option would be a use variance, which is a pretty high bar to climb. And, and, and I can understand Sandy Woods looking for, potentially, you're saying you're looking for alternative ways of, of addressing a financial shortfall. Keeping in mind that, just like every other residential properties or properties in, in the town, you know, roof-mounted solar, I know that's not what you guys do, but roof-mounted solar is allowed everywhere by Rife, so that would certainly be an, an option there. But I, I personally would have to say, having spent a lot of time on this, I, I don't also know how you say to one development, okay, because you have a financial situation, we're gonna let you have ground-mounted solar. Because you could look at, you know, individual homeowners across town, you could also look at other condo developments or apartment complexes and try and make the same argument. And then, where do you end up? So, while I'm somewhat sympathetic, for me, it's a, it's a, it's a high bar, and, and I'm not sure it doesn't open up a, a situation where, where do we say, I mean, like I said, you'd have to get a use variance, and, and, but, you know, what do we say to other individual homeowners or other, you know, multifamily homeowners that say, well, you know...
So, actually, I'm glad that you made that point, because I don't think you need to worry about setting a precedent here. And that's because this is a modification of a comprehensive permit. And in order to have a comprehensive permit approval, you have to have at least 25% of the units be affordable housing. And so, this would only set a precedent for other people who have had comprehensive permits approved, who wanted to come back and get approvals for, for a solar array in that portion of their development that had previously been identified for agricultural uses. So, I don't really think that you should worry much about setting a precedent, because none of the other applicants that you're mentioning have a comprehensive permit approval.
Well, actually, we have, we do have other, we do have other comprehensive permits that have been approved in Tiverton already.
Yep.
And I don't know if you might not be aware of this, but we've got a flurry of them right now in front of us. So it's, it's, we're, 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 we've got plenty of comprehensive permits either there or that are, are being proposed right now, literally.
Yeah, yeah. For those, I think that's absolutely fair. I just, prior to that, you had mentioned single-family homeowners and multi, and so, yeah, for comprehensive permits, it, I think it would apply.
And one other note that I did want to add and would love the board's feedback on, as well as, you know, if we went the route of accessory, understanding agriculture would be out of the question, and we'd need that use variance for it being residential, we would be meeting all the other covenants that are within the ordinance under that. The only, the only issue is that this is in a residential zone. And that's what it boils down to. There's already veg, there's already screening around the edge of the property. There's tons of trees that go along Cornell Road. And we would be meeting that 200-foot setback because of the abutting properties not being commercial or industrial. So just open to comments on that as well. And, yeah, just overall, what the, what the feelings are. And I really appreciate your feedback.
I have a couple of comments, and that is, we got this material last week. I mean, there was no narrative with it. I mean, there was no plans. We've been told in the past by previous solicitors, you go by what's in the land use, land evidence books. You use a lot of assessor's information. It should be. So yesterday, I came in and spent a couple hours looking at all minutes of the planning board. I was on, started this, the very first comprehensive permit that we had. And there are original documents. And it was signed in, it was approved in 2009, concerning, and, and I didn't have a chance to call Ashley or Todd. But do we have to go through the state again, like we do normally? How do we do this, amending a comprehensive permit? It's totally within your authority. Is it? Okay. I'm just asking. I'm not... Okay. I'm just asking, I'm not a planner or a lawyer.
It's not your comprehensive plan, it's a comprehensive permit.
Wrong term.
And the, in the most recent time we did it was to, to make some modifications at the Cassett Reserve.
Okay. I mean, it was pretty hard. The time limit, the time bothers me.
Or importantly, Rosemary, you now have an ordinance defining minor and major amendments.
Right. January 1st. Right?
Yeah.
Okay. But I mean, you know, it's like, I've been sixes before Christmas, so anyhow, bear with me, but I mean, it would be very helpful. I mean, because of Plan Two of the final plan and the final decision, in our package, we received a decision that was for the master plan. I mean, and we need more sufficient information to make good judgments.
Understood.
I mean, and, I mean, it was a long time ago, and Tricia thankfully brought up the covenants, because Mr. Bossom, who was the owner of the property originally with Steve Asta guy coming in, and, you know, it was important to the town. And I, I'm a supporter of them too, but I've also think your management company up there, you know, sometimes needs a little bit of supervision, but anyhow.
I mean, that's, that's what we're trying to address, is, you know, we've been running that development on a shoestring budget, and so, we're trying to find ways of increasing revenue to help support the management company and do necessary repairs and maintenance there as well. And that's, that's why we're here for you tonight.
But I, I mean, it would be helpful when you submit a plan, to have the information so that we can follow the checklist and, and bring in, you know, accurate plans.
Yeah. I, I mean, apologies for not providing more detailed information. Again, we just wanted to, to try to test the waters and, and get your temperature on, you know, what kind of appetite you may or may not have for this application. We certainly would put together a, a fully developed application if it seems like you'd be, you know, amenable to hearing it.
I, I'd like to just say that everybody around this table would like, appeals very strongly that the Sandy Woods artist community is a, is an asset to the town of Tiverton, and we very much want to make it successful and, and, and set it on a strong financial footing. There's no question about that. I personally think that there, there are an awful lot of issues about this solar array that we did not encounter the last time Michael was before us with a solar, a small solar array on Fish Road. This, this particular project, it may not lend itself. So, I think you, you know, I, I think you're gonna, you know, I, I'm not sure I see a clear path for moving forward with this, personally. I'm just one of, I just have one vote here, but...
And have you looked at other alternatives for revenue generation if the solar wasn't to go through, to keep the project going forward?
We have. I mean, there, there isn't anything that's, yeah, we haven't found other good solutions.
I'm out of my lane a little bit here, but is some sort of blitz of roof-based solar across the, the structures there going to...
You have a large community center.
But I don't know if it, you know, from a kilowatt perspective, if you're going to achieve the same.
The, the cost for putting roof arrays on and the revenue that they support is, it's just, the, the cost to installing those compared to a ground mount, and then it doesn't, it just doesn't, it's, it doesn't work.
Anybody else? Michael, you...
Yeah, I just wanted to see feedback on just a path forward. I do appreciate the time and everything, and I want to be conscious of that. I saw your agendas quite lengthy following this. So, does the board have a recommendation on a path forward as to, you know, should we choose to continue, go forward with this project? Would it be to go after a use variance first, or would it be to get the comprehensive permit amended first?
A comprehensive permit amendment would grant the use variance.
Oh, gotcha. Thank you.
And I would encourage you to, to talk, to talk, talk with Ashley.
Okay.
I mean, I can discuss process with you, but if the general consensus of the board is that you're not feeling positively about a solar installation as an amendment, I, I can't change that or do anything, do anything about that. It's whether or not this board is receptive to a com, an amendment to the comprehensive plan to let them install the solar to keep the project viable. That's the question before the board. I can, once, once there's a determination on that, I can advise them in, in terms of process, and I can advise the board in terms of how you would make your decision and what we need to do, you know, from a technical perspective. But really, it's, it's the, you know, it's, it's the feeling of the board as to whether or not that that's a, an application you would be considering in a favorable way.
I might suggest, though, that you also take a look at the deed, because I'm, again, I'm not a lawyer, but there do seem to be deed restrictions and covenants that run with the land regarding that particular portion of the law.
Definitely take a note of that and would pursue, you know, a, whatever potential remedies there are to that hurdle, if it seemed like it was worth exploring.
I mean, I think that, you know, the board really needs to weigh here the, the, the two things you have in front of you, which is, you have a, a comprehensive permit that the applicant or the owner of which is telling you is, you know, struggling economically because of a previous approval for renewable energy that just did not work. They've come back to you with an alternative for a, a change to the approach to renewable energy, which doesn't exactly align with your solar ordinance. So, you're really kind of trying to balance those two things and make a determination about what you feel comfortable with. You know, I think the, I don't want to speak for Christian, but I think the applicant is here telling you that, you know, they've investigated options, and this is really the one that they feel is going to keep Sandy Woods, you know, above water or viable.
Do you eventually have an abandoned site there, not even being utilized if there's...
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, but...
Could that occur if we don't come up to a solution?
I, I mean, I think it's in the town's best interest, certainly, to work with the applicant as much as possible here to keep Sandy Woods economically viable. I'm not telling you, you know, throw out your solar ordinance or throw out your concerns, but I'm, I'm suggesting that you need to, to look at those two things and really kind of weigh those carefully and think about, you know, what are the, what can we do here that seems appropriate and that also can assist this project.
What's the timetable? You, you mentioned getting a replacement wind turbine. What's the timetable for that? Like, is, is that, is this, is the ground mounted solar array the, the preferred approach as opposed to a replacement turbine or...
No.
Or turbine?
Honestly, we need both of them, and we're in discussions with ECOG on, on both fronts. And I think there's been some, you know, procurement challenges related to the wind turbine that have delayed that it, yeah, it, you know, we're, it's a, it's a big, that 50% of the development's electricity consumption is a big chunk of money every year that is lost. And so, you know, it's hard to come up with new revenue streams that are going to fill that.
How long can you maintain before it actually just ends?
That's right.
And to add on to the wind turbine comment, as Christian mentioned, procurement is an issue. We're seeing anywhere from 12 to 14 months lead time, and that's just to get the products shipped. That doesn't count getting them delivered. Most of them are overseas, so the lead time of delivery will also be a huge component. So, we're probably looking at at least a year and a half before construction could even happen on a wind turbine, and that's if we were to order today.
I mean, my feeling on this is that, I mean, there have been factors and variables outside of your control that have negatively impacted the ability to sort of meet the proverbial letter of, of sort of the comp permit there. I, I mean, I would be open to trying to figure out a way forward. I'm one person here. Like, I don't know if it's as much as a, you know, swap X for Y in terms of renewable energy source, but, I mean, perhaps there, I don't know. I'd certainly be open to it. But again, I'm only one person on the board.
As Rosemary pointed out, we really didn't have a narrative to sort of prepare us for this discussion tonight. I, I'm, I'm pulled in several different directions. I am very concerned about the precedent, because we're going to have comprehensive permit projects all over the place, for several, for several very good reasons, which I won't go into. But that, that is going to be the preferred type of development that comes before this board, I think, over the course of the next year at least. So, that's something that we, but we might be able to manage that in some way. I, I also agree with Bill that this project is so important to the town of Tiverton. I'd really like to put it back on a, on a healthy financial footing and, and do anything I can without setting a precedent. So, I'm just wondering if we should keep this on the agenda. We can't do anything in the near term anyhow, because we don't have any special, our special use permits are suspended for six months. I'm just wondering if, if, if Michael, working with Christian, couldn't perhaps put together a one-page narrative, making us, making your best case, that we could then circulate well in advance, well in advance of our next meeting, ask everybody around this table to, to think about this, and think about how we might be able to, it might even require an amendment to our solar ordinance, some way to protect the town, while also giving you what you need, because you've convinced me tonight that you really are up against it financially. So, so yes, we really want to work with you, but, but, but I think we need more information, and I think we need the, the opportunity to, to have a further discussion. And, and if we do keep this on the agenda, we'll obviously alert you to that, so you can both, one or both of you can both be here with us when we, when we discuss further. I don't recall seeing that.
Did you not get this?
Did, did...
You're asking for a one-page narrative, and this is a letter from Church Community Housing that's about one page, that kind of lays out the, the issue.
Did you see that?
It's not signed.
On the back.
It is.
Maybe you only could... I mean, there were... Two pieces of support material in the packet. One was the application, and then one was, I mean, there is a letter.
Is that not in the digital file?
Yeah, I, I got it.
Mine's not signed. It is signed, it's signed on the back. This is what I got.
Okay, I, I do, I do have...
No, I have, there's a letter from ECOG Energy and, in the packet, and the old Sandy Woods, Sandy Woods decision from December of '06. That was all.
This was part of the packet that I, the back was it? So, they didn't get duplicated on the back, but there is, it is signed.
Thank you for your... She seems, Dennis seems to have one that's duplicated on the back.
I don't have one signed on the back. It's not in the electronic version, but it did come in the paper version.
So, if you didn't pick up a paper packet.
This is the part, this is the...
Is there any way to get consistency between the electronic and the paper?
It's what's submitted to us. They submit an electronic to us along with the paper, so...
But then if we could be let, if, 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 especially now since the town halls closes early on Fridays, if we could be aware that there are paper things that aren't in the electronic...
I don't think anybody realized that until just now.
This is what I got. So, Stu, before we finish, and, and, I think for me, I, I would like to understand a couple of things, first of all, and I would like to, and I think I can find this, but I would like to see the original decision from Sandy Woods, and I would like to see the, particularly the part of the decision and the part of the narrative as it related to the wind turbine, and, and where that, where that was in the approval, number one. Number two, with all due respect, please do not be offended by this, I would like to understand the finances of this better. If you're telling us that there's a significant hardship, I would like to understand what the, you know, what the lease payment is going to be, what the, you know, are you, you're selling all of this back into the grid, I'm assuming? You know, I, I would like to see the finances of this, and I would like to see how and where they need to be applied. Because honestly, Mr. Bill, then, when you say a little bit of this can be applied to maybe the community garden and the agriculture and all that, I think that doesn't sound like a hardship to me. If, you know, so I'd like to be able to understand that what exactly is the financial hardship, and how is this going to address that? You're going to have to convince me a little bit, because I, I, I am, I am very concerned about, A, you know, putting ground mounted solar in a residential zone, and, and B, I am really concerned about, regardless of the precedent that gets set, even if it is to stay only for comprehensive permits, that, that, that they too need additional financial support to be viable, and this becomes a, this becomes a pattern.
I'll only, and I don't mean to jump in, but I'll only offer that I, I do think that there's a bit of a unique circumstance here in that this development was designed to have a solar installation, or, excuse me, a renewable energy installation. That's why you have electric, I'm assuming, because it's, that's not a preferable method of heating your home, or, so, I do think that there's a bit of a unique circumstance here, that you could potentially set this apart and, and not worry so much that you're setting this broad precedent for every comprehensive permit. And I'm, I say that, that you might be able to. I don't say that with complete confidence, but I think it's something that you could think about, and we, you know, the applicant can provide additional information that really differentiates this project from others, that, that may increase people's comfort level with an application.
It might, although the fact that you're going to replace the wind turbine, right? You're going to replace, and ultimately, the plan is to replace the wind turbine, which is originally part of this, then you'll have solar on top of that. And if I were a developer for a comp permit, I would just come in right from the get-go and say, "Well, in order to make this, you know, in order to make this viable, you know, I need this alternative energy as well." So, I, I see what you're saying, Ashley, but, you know, it, there, there is an, there is no question, even with the screening, there is an impact to the property values of, of residential property in the neighborhood. The, the study has, you know, definitively shown that. And, and that, you know, that means something that we, you know, need to consider as well. One is one, but if it becomes many, then it's, it really starts to go, the entire reason that the original solar ordinance got thrown out the window and we started over was exactly that the community was up in arms about solar installations in residential zones, so. But I would like to understand the finances there a bit better.
Yeah, just to that point, I mean...
Yeah, just to that point, I mean, we're trying to find a path back to financial sustainability, and so the first thing that would happen is that our reserves would get recapitalized, so that as additional, you know, as roof replacements and, you know, boilers and and other major expenses arise, we have the funds in escrow to pay for those things. It's, and it's also, you know, from the lender's standpoint, they want to see that you have a buffer against those times to ensure that you can continue to make your mortgage payments. And and so that would be the first thing that these um new revenue sources would would go to, a- and then, and only then, and that's going to take a few years at least, would you, would we have any funding available? Because we're talking about 15, 20-year uh agreements um to to for these ground leases for the wind turbine and for the solar array, only then would we approach a a potential scenario where the funding would, where our reserves would be capitalized, where we would be in a strong enough financial position to put that money towards the arts and agricultural programming. So that's why, yes, I can say it it could go to that, but it wouldn't be first. The first thing is to get, uh, and and we're happy to share all the finances, it's very easy to show you, like, there's just zero in reserves, it's easy for us to show you that we have, you know, as an organization, been putting, taking money out of our operating funds to go to Sandywood's, which is not what's supposed to happen. All of these developments have their own ownership and own own ownership entities, and they have their own accounting, they get their own separate audits. You aren't supposed to be able to take any surplus cash flow out of one development to support another one, and vice versa. And, you know, we're doing it because, you know, we want Sandywood's farm not to go bankrupt, not to be a failure, um, and that's also why we're here tonight, to try to get back on a path of financial stability, so that we, as I said, so that Sandywood's can pay its bills, and hopefully, at some point in the future, you know, achieve that vision that we set out to uh achieve with Joe Bassem um all those years before.
So if you would, if you would provide us with with a with a memo um addressing some of the issues that that Tricia and others have raised tonight, we will um, we will keep you on the agenda and work with you and try to figure out, as we learn a little bit more about the situation at Sandywood's, um, figure out if there is um, i- if there is a path forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
I think that's about all we can do tonight.
Understood, um, and would this be a continuance of the concept plan discussion?
Yes, it would, we would continue the concept plan, absolutely. You're, you're, it would be premature for you to 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 submit any kind of an application at this point.
Stu, can I also request, my assumption you guys have like three, five years, some sort of plan of growth um to kind of get back on track, whether it includes this or other forms of new income streams or way to generate income? If we could include that, that'll just give us a bigger picture of, you know, if this doesn't work, are there other ways, or are there other things we can do to help to support?
All right.
Okay.
And then as for meeting dates, just so we have time to prepare all of this, I assume it's safe to say March meeting?
Well, we could put.
It would be February, unless you want it to be March.
Okay, how do you?
I think in order to be able to address all of the comments that have been raised tonight, it's going to take us more than.
Okay.
Okay, March then.
Great, thank you. I also, just being conscious of availability of getting materials out and everything that we don't want to give things piecemeal, um, so March it will be.
Very good.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
So at this point, Ashley, is there any need for our engineers for the rest of the agenda, or can?
Cut him free.
We can.
Thank you, Stu. Thank you, I, please.
Good night.
Send send you home in a more reasonable. So that, that brings us to planning board business, and the first item on the agenda, three A is election of planning board officers. We have three uh, three officer positions, uh, chair, vice chair, and secretary. Would anybody like to make a nomination for chair?
I would.
Yes.
I would like to nominate Stuart Hardy as chair of the planning board.
Does anybody else have a nomination for chair?
I'll second Tricia's.
So, so VA seconds the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all of those in favor?
It's unanimous, Steve, you're stuck. Unless you know why. Do you want to discuss anything, Stu?
So vice.
We're not giving him that opportunity.
Vice chair, I'd like to nominate Tricia as vice chair. Does anybody else have a nomination for vice chair?
Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have Bill Gerlach seconding my motion. Is there any further discussion? Hearing no discussion, all of those in favor. It's unanimous, your sentence now, to a year.
I think that's what we get for nominating.
Well, the good thing about Stu is his attendance record is practically stellar, so this is really, this is like being, this is like being lieutenant governor in Rhode Island. Do anything.
So now we have a third position, though, secretary. Does anybody care to make a nomination for secretary?
Can we, can we just elaborate what the secretary does? Yeah. I'm not clear there.
Well, we've never, we've never actually had one, but our bylaws do show that we do have a secretary position, so.
And what is the responsibility?
Well, I think the idea was that the secretary would take minutes, but I think that's a terrible idea, because the members of the board have to pay, focus their full attention on the deliberations and the discussion with applicants, and not be diverted by trying to take minutes at the same time. So, um, so, so we really, so, since I don't hear any nomination for a.
I'll nominate Bill Gerlach to be secretary.
With all due respect, without understanding what my obligation is, I'm not like.
Luckily, your bylaws tell you.
I don't have those up in front of me.
He's going to read it to you.
There you go, thank you, Mr. Romano.
Posting the agenda, recording of minutes, ensuring proper legal notice of hearings is provided, maintain an applicant's file in attending to correspondence of the planning board.
I'll stop you right there. Like, I, I'm literally working 12 to 14-hour days, I'm on the phone for 12 to 14 hours a day, like, I'd have no time to do that, so I would respectfully request that Ms. Hilton withdraw that.
You don't actually do it.
And I, and I was, and and I suggest that those, those functions are really staff functions.
Well, it says in the absence of Mr. Ortella.
So.
But I wouldn't be able to do it, in all honesty, like, I I just.
So now I'd like to go on to um, planning board, um, agenda item 3B, which is five-year comprehensive plant update uh to statewide planning. Ashley, do you have anything to say about this?
No, you have a draft here that Stu worked on preparing. I I've looked at it, I don't, I don't really have any additions to this.
Um, it, 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 it was done at least a week ago, it only got distributed today, I believe.
Yeah.
Things need to get out in a more timely fashion, Ed. You really need, you had it.
Well, I didn't have this.
You emailed just to me.
It wasn't emailed to me.
I emailed it to you, Ed, and and then later I emailed it to Ashley.
Okay, the email that I had only came to me, so I think there was a bit of confusion there.
Is it possible that we could, and make just a distra list, that you could just, nope, that's not allowed?
No.
Okay.
I tried.
It's to prevent quorums outside of.
You can actually create a quorum through email.
So, so I'd just like to say that, that this is, this is almost, this is really an administrative task to give statewide planning a periodic update on progress toward the implementation of our comprehensive plan. Um, I I just did it to take the burden off, Ashley, um, and I don't think it's a big deal one way or the other, um, but probably the board should um take a look at what we're sending into statewide planning and actually authorize or or actually approve it. And y- you can't do that tonight because you haven't seen it in advance. So maybe we should put this on the agenda again for February. So, uh, so we don't need to take, are you suggesting that we actually have a motion to put it on the agenda for February?
Yeah.
We don't really need that, do we?
We're continuing an agenda item, so.
We're just continuing an agenda item.
And that's usually a vote.
So I I'll make a motion to continue this agenda item for discussion and a vote uh at the February meeting.
Do we have a second? We have a second, any discussion?
Just a quick question, when is it due to the state?
They're flexible.
So we're, we're behind.
We're, we're way behind.
They know that, they know that we're working on it.
Okay.
They've been very reasonable.
That there is no real consequence to not having it, of course, we want to comply, but delaying it one month is not going to, nothing's going to happen to you.
So this brings us to agenda item number 3C, solar ordinance use table changes and application checklist. This is something that I talked to Ed about 10 days ago. Actually, at our last meeting um in December, I promised the board that they would get the uh, the draft check, solar checklist that Tricia put together. Today, I reminded Ed once again that this is the backup for the agenda item that we're discussing now. So now, um, we've, um, so you've just seen this today, you haven't seen this before today. So again, maybe we should just continue this item, and to give everybody a chance to uh, to read it over and to consider whether or not you like what Tricia has put together. Tricia, is that a good way of dealing with this?
I would say yes, although the only thing that I don't know is whether or not, based on the new regulations, um, the options that were previously approved under Article 20 in the technical review committee, are there any changes there?
Uh, under Article 20?
Yeah, so, so.
Under DPR.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, well, DPR has changed.
Right, so there are three, well, there are three that were approved under Article 20 before.
Right, I see what you're saying.
And then there's a bunch that are now, that were going to be, in the past, approved as both major land development and have an Article 20 component to them.
Can't do that anymore.
Can't do that anymore, so.
I'm not even sure if it would qualify for development plan review anymore under, well, unless we.
Could define it.
We'd have to specify.
So since most of these are, most of these fell into the special use permit category, a few of them didn't, I think we do need to now figure out the approval process for these, because that's now all changed. So maybe in addition to the checklist, maybe we should have a discussion, I mean, we don't have to do it because they're special use permits, but, um, or most of them are anyway, but we're going to have to figure that out.
Right.
Going forward.
Yep.
So we might have to have an agenda discussion about how we do this.
So I think we're not just necessarily talking about the checklist, you may need to make amendments to the solar ordinance, if the ordinance itself specifies how each of the different types of applications are reviewed, if that's not consistent, then we're going to have to change that.
Right. I mean, it was consistent when the ordinance was written, but now it's after January.
Right, right.
So maybe we should just have an agenda item to discuss the approval process, and does that need to be changed?
I think we need to discuss the solar ordinance in general in terms of its review process and the requirements for a checklist.
So we're not actually just continuing this item, we're coming up with a new agenda item for February.
Yes.
So we don't need to carry this one forward, we don't need a motion.
Okay, okay, so um, that brings us to agenda item 3D, which is the approval of the planning board budget. And you'll recall that that last, um, at our last meeting, um, we decided that I would put together a draft letter um to town council with the numbers that we agreed upon, there are two line items, um, a small line item for advertising and a larger line item for technical and professional services. We agreed to keep the advertising at the same level because it'll be less expensive now that we don't have to do certified mailings. And, but we did agree to increase from $10,000 to $15,000, the uh, the amount for technical and professional, knowing that we're in the process of redoing zoning and subdivision regulations, and we might need to turn to, we definitely, we will need to turn to outside experts, um, so that, so you do have a copy of my draft letter, um, and, uh, but we need, I need you to approve it.
This is agenda item 3D. It's just one page, and Bill actually suggested that we put a little verbiage in there, um, defending or making a case for what we're trying to do. So, um, so please feel free to make any suggestions for amendments. And then I'd like, uh, because we are now running out of time, I would like us to approve something tonight, it might be the the text that you have, everybody does have this, I hope. My letter, okay. And, um, and then if anybody wants to amend it, that's no problem, I, we can, we can, if you'll give me the flexibility of just adding that language in and then getting it off tomorrow to uh bring it into the clerk's office tomorrow, so it gets into the process because they, the the budget process is now beginning to move forward, and they would, the clerk and the town council would like to see our recommendations as soon as possible, so, okay, does anybody?
Well, well, I, we need to change the date, up at the top, it's dated 23, it should be 24.
Thank you very much.
That was the same thing, now that slide presentation.
With that, I think everything is fine.
I did this right after.
I believe you get the whole month of January to make that.
I wrote this letter the day after our, our meeting in December, so it was actually still 2023 when I wrote the letter. But yes, thank you, good catch. And does anybody have any other? Okay, but now I need a motion to, yes, we're going to, we're going to capital. have any other? Okay. But now I need a motion to, yes, we're gonna, we're gonna capitalize the C for chairperson. And does anybody have any, does anybody care to make a motion to approve the letter as amended?
Are you going to attach a budget sheet to this letter?
Yes, 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 yes. It will, it will have, it will have last year's approved budget attached to it, showing the two line items.
So add attachment at the bottom.
Okay, good. Okay, with those, with those amendments?
I'll make a motion to accept the letter as amended here this evening and authorize the chairman to send it forth to the.
So we have a motion, a motion from Bill and a second from Rosemary. Any further discussion? Those in favor? I think it's unanimous. Okay. That brings us to agenda item three E, TRC, policies and procedures. We did discuss this way back in October and then we discussed it again at our last meeting in December. And we have voted to create a TRC and Ashley can call the TRC anytime she needs to or wants to. But what we discussed at our last meeting, and I went and I looked at the YouTube to recording of our last meeting very carefully today, and we did agree, and it was actually Ashley's suggestion, that we come back today with a cleaned up version of the policies and procedures document that everybody should have. And that I would also today give everybody a chance to make any additional amendments. I don't think anybody has any additional amendments. I know I don't. But, so what we're doing is we're working with this document, but this document has not been cleaned up. It, it still has verbiage that we have voted to either take out or amend. And so I'm wondering, so I asked Ed.
That was not an electronic package?
Yeah, no.
That was, we've got that along with a wire.
Yeah, but I have a cleaned version that has a date and made all those changes.
I, I didn't get, I didn't get a hard copy of it. I've still got the old one right here.
Me too.
There wasn't an electronic copy.
All right. So we, this, the version that you have in front of you is the same version, I think, that was on last time that we cleaned up. So the question being, is there any additional amendments that I need to make? Because I believe I made those last amendments, but we'll, we'll clarify that. If there are additional amendments, tell me now. I will make them and everybody will get a brand new version as the adopted because I, I made the, the changes from the last meeting.
Okay, I, no one has seen your changes though, so we don't know what they are.
They're the changes that you asked for.
Yeah.
At the meeting.
But we need to see something in writing in order to, in order to say, hey, we're, we're fine.
That's not a fair way to put it.
All I'm asking is there are any, any, I mean, it doesn't really matter. They're adopted. So we could, you can bring this back at any time.
Sure.
And amend them whenever you want. So we'll make sure that you have the updated version from the last meeting. If you want to keep it on the agenda and discuss it again, that's fine. We can, you can amend this at any time and you don't need to have a public hearing or anything to do that. You can just do it at your leisure.
I don't think we even need to keep it on the agenda, but I think it's important that everybody see the cleaned up copy.
Oh, yeah. No, that is the intent for, for sure. If there are any additional changes that anyone wants made, you could tell me now. I could make those, incorporate them into the updated version and then get it out to everyone.
We, we talked about membership and I think everybody agreed on the membership. We, we talked about giving Ashley flexibility to invite interim temporary members of the TRC if, if certain technical issues came up that needed expertise outside of the regular membership. We, we talked about, we talked about the way that the meetings would be advertised. And I believe that we agreed that we would submit that to the Secretary of State's office.
Yeah.
And that we would have minutes that would, sort of official minutes that would also go to the Secretary of State's office. That was, so I, I don't have any further amendments, but if people have a, have a cleaned up, a hard copy or an electronic copy, but one that's been cleaned up, they can take a look at it. And then if they have a problem with something, then we can, then we can put it on the agenda.
Okay.
And discuss it. But I, I think we've got, you know, so I, I wasn't trying to be mean.
No, I didn't take it that way.
Well, but I didn't even get a response from anybody to my emails.
I'm not sure. I don't have my laptop in front of me, so I'm not sure of what, what emails, but I'll make sure that everyone gets a cleaned up copy.
Okay, good, 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 good. So I think that, that satisfies that agenda item. So that brings us to agenda item number three F.
Well, there are two portions to the technical.
Oh, yes, that's right. We have to, we, we still have to appoint three members of the planning board to the TRC. Up to three members, at least one, but up to three members. And VA made the comment that it should have at least one. So do I, do I see any volunteers? Any volunteers can, ah, we've got two volunteers. We've got, we've got Chris and Rosemary volunteering. Is there a third member who would like, ah, VA. Now remember, this could be during the day.
I work from home conveniently.
Okay, 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 okay. Excellent. I, I would like to make a, a motion then to nominate as our three members to the TRC, Chris Shriver, Rosemary, Eva, and VA Lopes. Do I have a second? We have a second from Trish?
Second.
Okay, those in favor? It's unanimous. You're sentenced. Okay. So that, so that will bring us to the approval of minutes for December 5, 2023 meeting. And I do have corrections, if I can find where my minutes went to. Okay, on the second page, first paragraph on the second page, take, remove a little space between 25.7 feet. That's just a tiny little technical thing, but just to clean it up. And then at the very bottom of page two, the next to the last paragraph, it says Susan Mara. I think Susan is spelled S-U-S-A-N.
Yes.
No, not two N's. Okay. And then on the next page, in the first paragraph, engineer Molly Titus. If, if you want to say engineer, then make it lowercase e for engineer, but I'd, I'd rather have it just Molly Titus P-E. Everybody understands what that means. Then if you go down to three, four, the sixth paragraph, which is only a one sentence paragraph, I don't understand what it means. It reads, Ms. Hilton made a request to amend the motion to include as annotated in an updated staff list. I have no idea what that means. Tricia, do you happen to know what that means?
No idea.
He's referring to the John Mancini project and the Excel, non-Excel sheet table created by Susan Mara.
Yeah, that we amended as we walked through it.
I think it needs a comma there, Stu is what it is. To include as amended, comma, in an updated staff list. Or staff table.
Well, right below it, it says, Mr. Hardy made an amended motion to approve Ms. Mara's recommendation with amendments and as annotated in an updated staff report on waiver requests for checklist items from the Apple turn. So like, did I, did I just say we should amend the motion and then Stu did? Is that what happened?
Yeah.
I, we did. There was, you amended the motion. I do remember that.
But did I actually amend it or did I just say we need to amend it?
So I think we can just take that sentence.
Yeah.
That sentence, which is a paragraph sentence, just take that right out. Just, just delete that. Okay. And then, and then again, at the bottom of that same page, in the parag, in the second from the last paragraph, engineer Don Madeiras. Just say Mr. Donald Madeiras or Donald Madeiras P-E because P-E means engineer. Professional engineer. Okay. So just a little thing, but, okay. And so then on the next page, in the paragraph, next to the last paragraph, that starts out Mr. Hardy, it's original decorative streetlights. Okay. And then on the next page, in the paragraph that starts with B, homeowner association responsibilities. In that paragraph underneath B, it says controlled by an HOA. That really needs to be spelled out as a homeowners association. And then after you spell it out, then in parentheses, you can put in HOA and then, and then subsequently just use HOA to save time and space. And then on the next page, under D, amendments to zoning article, to bring into conformity with, I would add state statutory changes so that everybody is clear that we're talking about the state, not, not municipal. And then in the section that starts out with E, five-year comprehensive plan update, in that first sentence that begins, Ms. Sweet said the state is looking for an update on implement, add the term implementation of the comprehensive plan. So people don't think that we're talking about amending the comprehensive plan. We're simply talking about a document that will show the implementation of the comprehensive plan. And then, and that's all I have. Does anybody else have any?
I, I saw it here. Page two, the second sentence, the first paragraph, Mr. Mondi said that the only setback we've replied would be the proposed real lot line because currently on the plan, the building is 25.7. And then at the end of that sentence, requirement is 50 feet. I would put a period and a capital T on that. And under the second applicant, the first sentence, owner Andrew didn't ask the item be moved out of board because his engineer was running late. Revo. Yes. And on page four, seven paragraph down, Mr. Hardy made, M-E-D-E.
Mr. Harvey was mad.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any boos to correct? Seeing, seeing none. I would make a motion to approve the minutes as amended. And so we have a second from Dick. A motion from me, a second from Dick. Any discussion here? No discussion? Those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Okay, here's my agenda. So that brings us to update, this would be three G, update of subdivision regulations from administrative officer and subcommittee. We've been continuing this and continuing it and continuing it for months now. And, and, and we've decided not to do anything because we do have, we don't have anything from Weston and Sampson to discuss. So I think the way we were leaving this is that we would have a, a subcommittee of the board. And we did have some volunteers to serve on that, as I recall. But we've never gotten together because we have nothing to discuss if we don't have anything from Weston and Sampson. Now, Ashley, what do you suggest? Do you think we should go ahead and just begin discussion among ourselves?
No, I think we haven't, we, everything with the zoning and subdivision kind of went on the back burner because you had to switch over to making amendments for the state and we didn't want to create crossover or problems. We didn't know exactly how those amendments were gonna play out and what they were gonna look like. You know, there was a period of time where we had to do, you know, we had to figure out how those were gonna get drafted. And so now we've, we've gotten over that first hurdle and I think we can turn, we can circle back to just looking at the subdivision regulations. The zoning committee has been moving through, you know, zoning pieces. I think we can begin to work through subdivision sections, you know, a piece at a time. If it's helpful, we could have an initial meeting with the people that have volunteered and maybe, you know, talk through how to progress through the subdivision regulations. I can make some recommendations. We can agree on, you know, a path forward and then we can, we can begin or continue. I mean, we did start some things. We just didn't, we didn't continue them forward because this, the requirements for this state law.
Who's we?
Kind of stepped in. Weston and Sampson.
Okay.
But we're happy now that that's, we're past that. We can, we can kind of reconvene and focus on looking at the subdivision regulations in total.
So should we go ahead, we, we can do this under the agenda, appoint a, a subcommittee tonight and then take it from there. And what I would recommend is rather than get people together without any preparation or anything on a piece of paper, we really need some things on a piece of paper.
Mm-hmm.
To discuss.
Yep.
So to make the, to make any meeting that, that a subcommittee would have meaningful. And of course, we have to be careful about the, the unintended quorum issues, but I would, I would certainly volunteer to be on that, a subcommittee. This would be a subcommittee that would be looking just at the subdivision regulations, which basically implement the zoning. Does any, would anybody else have an interest in that? So Dick, Dick is, is volunteering that he would like to help?
I mean, when, when would the subcommittee be meeting in theory? Is it like during normal business hours?
Yeah, hard to say. I don't know. Whenever Ashley would be available, actually.
You tell me. I work for you.
If it's during normal business hours, unfortunately, I can't, I can't volunteer.
But do any people are looking more for the subcommittee?
Can't have more than.
Maybe three.
Three, right?
One.
Can you have more than three?
Okay, we can.
Is it?
So myself, Dick and, and Tricia, I believe, have, have stepped forward to volunteer. And we don't know when we'll be meeting, but we can all, the three of us can all meet either day or night. So. So, do I have a motion to appoint us three as the subcommittee? So, at least we have a subcommittee.
So, moves.
And so, we have a motion from Bill and a second from Chris. Any further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, those in favor, unanimous. So, I think the first step, Ashley, would be, somebody put something on paper to get us going-
Yep.
-in advance of our first meeting. That could be you, or it could be me, you know? I'm not trying to dump more work on you, but, but that would, that would be the next step. But at least we now have a, a subcommittee in place, and we can take this off the agenda until we have, actually have something to discuss with the full board. So, that brings us to agenda item three H, which is update from North Tiverton Business Park Committee. And I'm the guy that represents the board on that committee. It's chaired very ably by Mike Burke of the Town Council. We have a really great group of people. We've, we've done a number of things. We've, we've, we have recommended to Town Council already that, that Town Council look into expanding the development impact fee to cover more than the cost of, the cost of new construction, the cost of, of schoolchildren caused by new construction, new housing construction. We've done that. We've also agreed to apply for Commerce Rhode Island program called Site Ready, which would enroll our business park into the Site Ready program. And then, the, and then the Site Ready program would be authorized to spend money to take a look at what needs to be done with respect to infrastructure in order to be, to make the park more, more attractive for businesses who might be interested in locating there. And then, finally, we are just about ready to finalize a request for proposals and a scope of work to be submitted to a consulting firm, Weston and Sampson, actually, to do a study of business revitalization and related revitalization in the north end of Tiverton, which means Route 24, north to the Fall River border, and Fish Road west to Mount Hope Bay. So, those, so we've done quite a bit in our, in our little group. Any questions? Any comments? Hearing none? And anybody can come. Our next meeting is tomorrow night at seven o'clock. Senior Center.
That, that meeting was-
Oh, really?
It was in my email.
I haven't seen anything.
The, the North Tiverton, right?
Yeah, North Tiverton.
Yeah. Mike Burke sent out an email.
Oh, he did? I didn't see-
He sent out a cancellation, and then he sent an email, because I think there was a mix-up on the dates on the agenda, and there wasn't time to fix the posting.
Oh, okay. Okay, thanks for telling me that.
Yeah. I hope I'm not giving you bad information, but that's what I saw.
No, no, no. I'll, I'll check it out. I'll probably call Mike tomorrow anyhow. Okay, so that was my update, and that brings us to three H, which is in, which, three I, which is an update on the zoning revision committee. And Tricia is our representative to that committee, which is, which is, which is very ably chaired by, by Jay Edwards and has a lot of really good members.
So, we're slogging along. I think slogging is probably a good word for it, but, you know, we're kind of tackling the zoning code from the beginning. So, we've got some things done, but, you know, it's a pretty Herculean task to go through that, to go through that whole thing. So, and, and we are meeting this week. We're meeting on Thursday night this week. We usually meet on Wednesdays. We're meeting on Thursday at the Senior Center at five. So, and those meetings are also open to the-
So, that brings us to agenda item three J, and three J is, is, is a very long agenda item, and it, and Ashley is asking us to consider how we would like to handle changes to special use permits during the six-month suspension of special use permits. All special use permits were suspended. And we promise to either provide specific and objective criteria for each of those special use permits, and/or go to a system of not doing, getting rid of the special use permit altogether, making that use a permitted use, but, but linking it with performance standards. And, and I have said, and I'll say it again, I, I think that that's kind of an attractive way to go. You do have in your packet, I believe, something that I put together, not for this particular agenda item, I put it together a long time ago, but it's a color-coded version of our, of our use table showing different special use permits that exist now, but dividing them into three baskets. A red basket would be special use permit that should, that should simply be no, not permitted use. A green basket that says, a special use permit would change to P, meaning it would be permitted. And then, a blue basket that would be special, existing special use permits that would remain special use permits, because it is fairly easy to define specific and objective criteria for the use. But this was put together before we decided to suspend all special use permits, and it was also put together before Ashley explained to us that we had a really good option of going with, with performance standards. My first question would be, and actually, this, this would be probably a request to Todd, that we get from, that we get something from Todd that would give us a better understanding of whether or not performance standards are, are legally binding if we get sued. What, what has been the, the legal experience of other communities that have performance standards?
You already have some. Like, gas stations can't be located within a certain distance of other uses.
Right, right. We do, but we would be, we would be wildly expanding the performance standards if we, if we do what Ashley has suggested. And I think the, the first question that begs our attention is, can we do this with assurance that we're on strong legal footing if, if we get taken to court? So, that, that would be my recommendation, that we get a legal opinion from our legal counsel on, on the legal standing of performance standards before, before we get too far down the road on creating new performance standards. The other thing that has occurred to me is, Ashley, there are, there are a number of, not a large number, but there are, are a fair number of existing special use permits that already have specific and objective criteria, or that could easily have specific and objective criteria. And those are the ones that, that I, that I have, I think, put in the, in the blue basket. So, could we actually keep some special use permits?
Sure.
Because they're, they're safe.
Yeah, I mean, you, you can do a mix of this. You can go-
I was thinking maybe doing a mix to make it a little easier. And then, the third thing that has occurred to me, as I've been thinking about this, is we have $10,000 in a planning board budget for, for, for professional services, technical and professional services. We haven't used any of it this fiscal year. Our fiscal year ends at the very end of May. I believe the new, the new fiscal year, oddly enough, begins June 1st. May is just around the corner. I, I've been thinking, you know, if we go to Town Council and say, please give us $15,000, they're going to say, you didn't use the $10,000 we gave you last year, let alone $15,000. So, I'm thinking, maybe we can take a little bit of burden off, off staff and hire somebody, because I don't think this job would cost much more than $10,000. At least we could-
What, with, what job?
The job of dealing with a special use permit.
You already have money for that through the Rhode Island Housing. It's already paid for.
So, where, where's the money? Where's the budget? I've never heard about this before.
So, this is an application that, that Chris filed with Rhode Island Housing to supplement the existing budget that you have. So, originally, we were trying to get funding from Rhode Island Housing, which everyone was, to pay a consultant to do your zoning and subdivision updates required by the law, because those are housing relate, housing-related.
So, how much money do we get for this?
You have a budget, I have to look at how it's split up, but you have, you have, it's close to $100,000 between doing the special use permits and implementing sections of your comprehensive plan that are directly related to housing. So, I'll, I'll bring you, I'll, I'll bring you the scope of work and the budget for that. I'll send it to everyone.
This is the first I've heard of it.
So, originally, we were trying to get money to do the whole rewrite, but the way that Rhode Island Housing released the funding, we wouldn't have had the money, essentially, in time to get it done before January 1st. So, the money wasn't there. Rhode Island Housing didn't release it with enough time for us to do the work. So, we changed that original scope to, because the special use permits got held over, and that is a result of the enabling legislation, it will pay for that work, and we added in work from the comprehensive plan, specifically items that were listed in the comprehensive plan as housing-related items that you wanted to achieve. We put funding in for that as well.
Okay, so, so is there a scope of work that you could actually share with the committee?
Yeah.
So, so how do you suggest that we proceed with this?
Well, I'll send you the scope of work. I'll send, so you'll see the details of it, but I think you just need to begin to, you just need to dig into the special use permits and not, you know, I don't think you need to worry about the, the budgeting side of it. That's, that's paid for. It's taken care of.
Okay. Because if we do hire somebody-
You already did. That's what the money's paying for.
So, I have a couple of questions on that.
Yep.
So, one is that performance standards are part of the ordinance, right?
Yes.
And variance language says that if you can't comply with the, with, you know, the language as written in the zoning ordinance, that you can get a variance. So, can you get a variance on a performance standard?
I would say yes.
I would agree.
So, so that's the first thing. And so, if you can get a variance on a performance standard, can you get a variance on specific criteria on a special use permit?
Nobody knows for sure, because that's never been tried, and I've, I've personally had lawyers tell me both. Yes, you can, and no, absolutely, you can't.
So, I mean, it seems to me, in order to decide which way to go, that's a really important question to answer, because if you can get a variance on a performance standard, right, and we're assuming that you can, then, you know, how you craft those performance standards and, and whether or not they're really enforceable, or how enforceable they are, depending on the mood of the zoning board at any given time, or this board, right, who could be granting them, versus, you know, specific criteria for a special use permit. I mean, I'd really like to know that in terms of making a decision as to which way to go.
Yeah. And I'm not asking you for a decision tonight. I just wanted to initiate the conversation. I think what needs to happen is, I need to provide you with some additional information and examples of performance standards. And I think, I'm not saying you have to get rid of all special use permits. I'm saying, I just want you to consider the option of performance standards in some cases where we come to a, a decision that that might work better than a, a special use permit. And the problem I have, and if you don't agree with me, that's completely fine, and we'll move forward on special use permits and not worry so much about the performance standards. But the issue that I have with the, the special use permits now, with the changes that have been made, is that they've really, they've really kind of changed the discretion or discretionary ability. They've, they've eliminated the discretionary ability of the town in issuing a special use permit. I, I have a, you know, a concern if you're not able, because basically, what, what it's trying to do is, any of this, any of the conditions that the zoning board would have put on a special use permit in hearing the special use permit, they want written in advance, so that the applicant knows ahead of time what they're required to comply with. The problem with that is that not every special use permit is the same special use permit, even for the same use, in a different location, may have different issues. So, there, the, you know, and I've, we've tried to do this a couple of different times in different places in different ways, like the, the, how do you write specific and objective standards for, or criteria for a special use permit in every circumstance? You can't do that. You're going to miss something. And the problem is, is that not, and, and again, you know, scale sometimes is an issue with some of these. You may write standards from the high end to the low end, and you're missing, you know, things on either side, or you're only regulating in the middle, or you're over-regulating the little one, and you're under-regulating the big one. And so, there's a lot of, you know, concern that I have there. The other concern I have is that if you are not able to get a variance to the specific and objective criteria, which I think there's a decent argument there that, that you can't, the point of them is to check boxes, basically. Like, yes, I did these things, and now you give me my special use permit. And I'll use the example of like a buffer. If, if one of the specific and objective criteria is, you have to have a 25-foot landscape buffer, and an applicant comes in and can't provide a 25-foot landscape buffer because the lot just doesn't allow for it, but is in a situation where 10 feet would have been fine, that, like, everybody would have been okay with 10, you can't waive that. That means they can't have a special use permit. That's a problem. That's not beneficial to the property owner, and it ties the hands of the town.
No, I, I, I understand what you're saying. I just, I think that there are some things, though, where, where, where you may not want to make them completely not permitted, but you want to limit them, and you don't want to give, and this is my question about, about a variance.
Giving a variance.
You don't want to give a variance on it. You, you can say, this is okay under this set of criteria, that's it. I'm not talking about shrubbery and buffers, but, you know, that's it.
Right. I understand.
And we don't want to see a situation where, where, where someone can get that beyond that, because- that because they can get a variance to it, which is why I'm curious to know whether or not specific criteria for special use permits can, are, are variance-proof.
Yep. And nobody can give you an answer to that yet. We can, you know, Todd can give you an opinion.
I'm thinking Todd did this.
He can give you an opinion because this has never happened bef, like, we've never been in the circumstance before where we've tested that. So it, it will get tested.
It will get tested.
Somebody will, will ask for a variance and they will be told they can't have one, and then they'll sue, and then it'll go to court, and then the court will decide, yes, you can give relief to specific and objective criteria, or no, you can't. But, so we don't have a definitive...
Or, or maybe, and, and I'm not the lawyer here, Todd is, or maybe the solution is, if you have a mix of both, you can make the case that says, here are things that have performance criteria.
Maybe.
Where we know that there might be situations where a variance works. So that's why those are in that category. These things over here are special use permits that have specific criteria. The reason they're not performance standards is that that's it on these. This is, this is our final limit. Maybe that's a more defensive position. I don't know. I guess what I'm saying is I would like to, I would like for us, as much as we can be informed on what the options are, to be informed. That's the first thing. I would also really like to see, I know we have some performance standards right now, but not too many. Are there any towns that have already implemented, you know, sort of gone in that direction, even if they're not our special use permits, the ones that we've used? I'd like to see what they look like. I'd like to get a feel for...
I want to give you some examples.
What those kind of performance standards look like, so that we kind of understand, you know, what their limits are. That would help me a lot. Look at these and move in a direction or the other. So I, I'm just wondering if maybe either at some point on a light agenda meeting, we actually make this, the, you know, kind of a presentation that you and Todd give to us and take us through this.
Yeah, because we need a, we need, as, as Bill said at our last meeting, the planning board needs a plan. Otherwise, we're going to be just spinning our wheels and we'll get to the end of our, our grace period and we will have done nothing. I, I've been thinking about, you know, special meetings on Saturday morning and that kind of thing. But I, I think that, I, I think that we've got probably a fairly light agenda coming up in February. I don't know if, if you're getting any hints otherwise, Ashley, but I'm not seeing anything huge coming down the pike in February. We could carve out some time in February to have a, to have a pretty thorough discussion and put a plan together. But in order to do that, we'll need to see something on paper in advance of our meeting.
Yep. You'll get some.
We're gonna do it like we do it in the corporate world. We're gonna actually have, we're gonna actually have, you know, a, a white paper or a position paper saying, here are some of the options that we're going to be discussing. Here, here are some of the pros and cons, so that everybody can get, get thinking about it. And then when we do have our meeting, we can actually make some progress and put a plan together. And in that plan will certainly involve consulting, consultants who will, who will be paid for by the, the money that's been made available. So that would be my suggestion. I don't know. Does that sound reasonable to everybody around the table?
It does. Could someone just remind you, like, how many, like, when's that window end again? Was it end of June?
Six months.
Yeah.
I think you can still have a conversation regarding the standards, whether they're specific and objective for special use or performance standards. You can start that conversation. And then the classification can come later. But I just work here.
And I know Stu, you've brought up a couple of times, like, getting together on a Saturday, and I hate to, like, make homework, but do we want to, like, put something on the books and, like, do that, or, like, put a date?
Well, I, I was thinking that our February meeting is quite early in the month, I believe. It's like February 2nd. Am I right about that? And, and I'm thinking that if we could, if we could have a good discussion in February and, and put a, and put something of a plan together, then at that point, I think it would be, then we can talk about a special, a special Saturday morning meeting or, or whatever time that works for other people. And I'd be available anytime and, and, and move from there.
Just, just a point of clarification. Do we need said consultant, if we're gonna pick this up at the February meeting, do we need said consultant there to be right?
I'll be there.
Okay.
With Rhode Island Housing money, there's only about eight choices. You have to choose a pre-qualified consultant. And Chris submitted two applications for MTAAP funding and received both of those and chose Weston and Sampson to do both of those jobs.
I didn't realize that you were
Yes.
Going to wear that hat. Okay, great. Now we're in pub time.
Good. Okay. So anything else, Ashley, that you'd like to raise about that?
Nope.
Agenda item. Okay, that's our last agenda item and...
But what about this thing from Jamie French?
Oh, yes, we, we do, we do have an email from Jamie French that everybody has a copy of. Does everybody have a copy of that?
Yes.
Okay. Please, please read it and give it the consideration it deserves. Okay, I'm gonna entertain a motion to adjourn.
Privilege motion at 9:07.